I'm be glad to, I haven't been watching time. I was short, so there's plenty of time for questions.
John Yocum has a question for you, Kevin. Well, first of all, I wanted to congratulate you on no fair bus rides, keeping it this long. I guess one of the unintended failures of it though was to get people like us, people like this group, not enough of us have taken advantage of no fair rides and taken the bus. I wish we would do more. But the question is, can it continue or will you have to reinstate fares?
Well, if you, I, it will continue for one more year, probably, or at least a portion of that year. I've, I've been briefed on the budget, the recommended budget, and it is in the budget for a year. However, we have a, a line, new line item that's new revenues. So we need to populate that, those new revenues. One way we can populate that is by bringing back the fares or bringing back some version of the fares. I want to, I'm really clear. It's working to get people out of cars and it's working for working people and students who have a limited budget and can get to work or get to school on, on this transit. My proposal is we keep it free for a year and then we take it to the voters. I would like to see a Tucson oriented transit, uh, sales tax proposal. Now, Kevin, you're crazy. We just failed on a sales tax. I think if it was focused mostly on transit and roads, road, road maintenance, maybe a few of the RT project, RTA projects that didn't get fixed. I think that would fly in Tucson as opposed to continuing the RTA. I'm very critical of the regional transportation authorities' management of these funds and, and falling short. And the proposals that I've seen, and we've gone through a whole series of proposals for RTA next. Tucson does not get its fair share. And I think our transportation future is not these big wide roads, making sure that people on the outskirts of town can get to Tucson 10 minutes faster is where we need to invest our resources. I think it's public transit and road maintenance, and I think that would work. And so I think I answered your question, John. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I, I think I have a question similar to that, Kevin. What are the revenue streams that the city council is really looking at to make up all the Lawson State and federal funding?
Well, the proposition was the big one and, and that didn't happen. So there are a few little ones. We have a public utility tax. Um, it's the highest in the state, but we could tack another dollar onto that. Um, we have a bed tax for people who are staying in hotels. Uh, we could increase that a little bit as well. There's a couple of others. They're not coming to mind right now, but they're, they're in the neighborhood of a million or a couple of million dollars that we might be able to make if we do it. There's, oh, parking, we can increase parking. And there's a possibility, Karen Ullrich has suggested this. Parking, uh, some, like during COVID, parking fees, which are mostly downtown, pay for Park Tucson, the people who go around and enforce the parking laws. Um, we could structure the parking fee so we make more money. And that could go into supporting, say, the downtown part of the, um, streetcar. And that would help us a lot. Uh, if, if anything that we could put into the streetcar, we could use from our streetcar subsidy to something else. So there's three. I, there's some more. And they will be discussed at the city council meeting. Study session item one, which starts at noon tomorrow. You can always watch the, the videos of it as well.
Yeah. What, what did you learn about that whole proposition? You know, we had quite, quite a few speakers come and visit us at Democrats Greater Tucson. And, um, there was almost three to one city, uh, city leaders compared to community leaders. And the community leaders, you know, uh, won the election. Um, so what, what did y'all, you know, if you could do it over again, what would you do?
Oh, I wouldn't put the airplane in it for sure. This was planned before Trump won. And polling was done and it showed it passing. The driver for it was public safety. We need a fight, new fire station. Um, police are underfunded. I know some people will disagree, but, uh, compared to most other metropolitan areas, police are underfunded. And, um, so that was the driver. Um, putting in all these other great programs that we like. Our thinking was, oh, there'll be something in it for everybody to like. The result, of course, was there was something in it for everybody to hate. Is my shallow analysis. The, the other thing that I'm sure tanked it was we're living through economic chaos. Where people are concerned about their retirement funds, the stock markets, you know, tariffs on tariffs off. Uh, what's happening? Um, and people rightfully so are being conservative. You know, people thought it was a regressive tax and sales tax is regressive. But if you're going to fight regressive tax, I'd say start off with the state legislature. Income tax, flat tax is incredibly regressive. And, um, we lose so much people, so much money from, from income tax on people who have really good incomes. Who I don't think really will miss it if they're taxed. And some of the finest days of, of the American economy is when we had really good uh, progressive taxes, um, that went into infrastructure that everybody could use. I long for those days. But I'm getting far afield from, from, from that. I, I've had conversations, lots of conversations. I don't have any conclusions really, except there were factors of there was something for everybody to hate. And it was not a good time to ask for, for a tax.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay. Susie Anderson has her hand up.
Just a quick question. We've got so many.
Do you have your, uh, uh, radio TV on or something?
Yeah, hang on a second. Um, or I can put it in the chat. I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. Thank you, Susie. Okay. And let's see if we have anything else in the chat. Well, thanks, Robert, for, uh, the, the latest S and P 500 being down. I don't think that's a question.
It's a big question, Joe. What are you talking about?
It is, it is a fact for sure. The, uh, let's see, who else? Oh, okay. Lee Oler, Lee, unmute yourself, Lee.
Yeah.
Unmute yourself. Yes, there we go.
Yeah, I was trying to do it on up there and now I have to do it at the bottom. It works faster. I, um, I'm in Kevin's ward. I love his office. I love all his staff. They're wonderful. And they do so much there. So, uh,
That's a good question. Thank you.
It's no, it's just, I'm just getting up. I'm not going to ask a question. I wanted to talk about the rallies that people are having or talking about. And I miss, I have missed, uh, the fact that many of these rallies don't focus on my main interest, which is the environment. And I saw, I went to Toubak for their hands-off rally. It was in the afternoon and this was a couple of weeks ago, Saturday afternoon. It was fun down there and I posted a couple of signs on, uh, Facebook. I thought Joe might be talking about that when he mentioned something, a little, a pissy sign or a little bit.
It says, I said it was a little intense.
Intense. Well, maybe this, uh, but it was a good sign. You should look at it.
I'm sure it was, Lee.
It was wonderful. Look at, and then, um, anyhow, what I want to mention for in the future is the Save the Santa Rita, Save the Santa Rita R. That's Rita. Okay. Save the Santa Rita Rally is at the Federal Building on May 3rd from two to four. And they keep saying it might change, but you can Google that on the site that you mentioned before, that Tucson site. Um, and I think the environment's getting short shrift in this. We are talking, people are talking about climate change, but only in very general terms. So I think the Save the Santa Rita's, uh, would be scenic Santa Rita's would be an interesting rally to go to because not too many people, first of all, know about it. And secondly, maybe they haven't been paying attention to the Santa Rita and the Hud Bay Mine that's been down there since 1996. They've been, can that be right? Must be 2016. Um, they've been working on this and it's gone from, you know, it's going to happen, it's not going to happen. And that's the mine has changed hands. Uh, the prospect of the mine has changed hands many times. And if they have enough money in the mine, they're going to get it through. And Robert, if you can correct me or put anything in on that, that'd be nice. But I think, I, I really think that the environmentalists aren't showing up. They're showing up, but they aren't making the environment the key. And I, I would like to have a few more rallies having to, uh, feature the environmental situations we have here. And I heard something. Pardon me?
That's a good point, Lee. And, and finish your thought. I had, I have, I have an answer to your question.
I had, um, I mentioned this to LD 20. One of the president agreed with me that if we don't have clean air and clean water, we aren't going to live. Uh, but, um, that got dropped after that. So, um, I'm kind of searching out my own little environmental things to, uh, take care of. And I also heard on the, I think on the radio this morning, very early, uh, that Trump is going after Oak Flats for sure, which is up near Superior, another mining. Um, Rio Tinto, I believe, uh, another mining project that's been pushed off for years. But it's, looks like it's back on the news. So we have to keep an ear out for these things. I'm done.
That's a very, very good point, Lee. Um, there's a rumor going around and we'll know pretty soon whether it's true or not, that tomorrow, um, Trump is going to attack all the environmental nonprofits and threaten their IRS status, which the lawyers say would be really hard to do, but I wouldn't put him past him trying to do that. And maybe something like that will bring out more conservationists. Yeah, I've seen conservationists at, at, at the protest, but you're right. They're either not holding signs or they're not, um, or they're holding other signs. You make a really good point. You also reminded me when you were talking about my staff that I wanted to advertise, we have a Ward Three newsletter. Even if you don't live in Ward Three, um, please consider subscribing to it. You go to the Ward. Do some interesting articles about issues, about events in Ward, Ward Three and about, um, businesses and other groups that are in Ward Three and, and it might be useful to you. I also have a campaign newsletter that you can sign up for as well, but that's a little more boring.
Lee, and what's, what's, what's neat about the, the demonstrations is, uh, people are making their own signs. So I think, I think it's great that you're putting it out. Hey, you know, we've got environmental issues, which we have. How many folks saw on the news about, uh, how Canada and China are working together now on pipeline? That's kind of poetic justice.
Exactly.
Okay, Robert, what can we do for you?
I'm wondering about the city's lobbying of the state legislature. It seems like bills coming out of the legislature, uh, with the exception of those being vetoed are universally anti-sustainability. I know the city has lobbyists, so what has the city been lobbying on? And how does the city get involved in state legislation?
Yeah, we have an in-house lobbyist. It was Andres Cano, who has gone on to Something Bigger and Better, um, but was really great in that role. Um, and we hire a Republican lobbyist group and a Democratic lobbyist group up in Phoenix. Um, and sometimes people go up there and lobby. I haven't done it because I, I have good connections with the Arizona legislators from Southern Arizona. And I don't think I'd have much influence on the, on the people in Maricopa. So we have, we have a long list of, um, bills that we consider, our lobbyists suggest we should support or oppose, or just for information, know about. And we work with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, um, on many of these bills that will affect all cities. Just, just in case you don't know, um, the legislature is Republican and, and tends to hate Tucson. We have some really great Southern Arizona legislators who are in leadership positions, who do good work for us. Um, and it's, it's very important that we maintain a Democratic governor because her role in stopping bad legislation cannot, cannot be undersold. Um, Tucson can only go so far. I mean, like, one thing I would like to do is ban single-use plastic bags in retail situations. That's a, that's an easy way to cut down on plastic, uh, reduce energy use. And, um, ISB did it. And then the legislature made it impossible for any municipality in Arizona to do it. So, um, uh, the legislature is frustrating to me. And one of the reasons I spend some time, some of my time trying to support good candidates for legislature and, and you know, we got Kevin Volk this time, due to some really, um, uh, strong efforts by people in LD 17 and others who, who went up there to help them. So, uh, if you want more details about which bills, uh, I don't think we posted anywhere, but I can get you that information.
Okay. Good question. Good answer. Susie Anderson has a question in the chat. And, um, can you explain why so many people are jumping into our city, county and state races?
It's a simple answer to that, because it pays well now. When I was elected, um, the pay was 24,000, at least for the city council. The pay was 24,000 a year, same as the legislature. Um, and by city charter, every election, there's a commission that looks at our salaries and makes a recommendation that goes on the ballot. It hadn't been changed since 1999, so I was partying like it's 1999. The reason I was able to, to run is because I'm at retirement age and I, this was not an income that I needed to raise my family with. And I think it kept out working families and single mothers and other people who might make otherwise really great city council members. Last election, when mayor was reelected, the commission, rather than saying, let's propose 32,000 or something, they, the proposal was, let's, give the city council members the same pay as county supervisors. That pay level is set by the state legislature. And, um, at the time it was 76,000 with an automatic raise, another 20,000. So that passed because I think people, it made sense to people. We're doing about the same amount of work, same budget, same responsibilities. Um, and now I'm getting a very decent salary. And I think that means that more people can, can get in the race. I'm glad when there's plenty of people who, who are running. Uh, you know, we, we need a robust field of people who can take on this work and, uh, the, the county supervisor position has always had, had, well, it has better pay now because of the $20,000 raise. And you know what I've been told, I don't know if this is true or not. The legislature give them, give them a high salary because many of them think of retiring, going back to their county and running for, um, county supervisor and then retiring with it, with a little better benefits after working in, at the, in the supervisor's office.
Okay. Well, uh, Barrel Baker in the chat has affirmation I'll start off with. The Ward Three Newsletter is the best in Tucson.
Thanks, Barrel.
It is since 1996 fighting for Save the Santa Rita's. How can the city become a part of the project to protect the mountains from being leveled by mining and reducing water harvesting from the mountains to Tucson?
Well, it's outside of our purview, but I personally have used whatever, um, prestige my office has to write letters and provide testimony. So that, that's one way individual council members can do it. But as, as a city, um, I, I believe we may have, and I, this may or may not be true, but my recollection is that we provided comments because it's a watershed that affects Tucson City Water. So Tucson City Water may have provided comments about that. And that's about it.
And the Agua Caliente Wash as well destroying wildlife habitat.
Well, I, I like the Agua Caliente Wash. It's outside of my, um, ward. And I very seldom go outside of my ward. There, there is a matter, uh, development plan, La Mariposa, that's going to be on the city council tomorrow. And I, I normally, Paul Cunningham, who's my colleague who represents that area, I would trust him to work for the best deal as possible. But that habitat is so important. Um, if it was in the county, they would not have let them build them there because they have a robust, um, endangered species, multi-species habitat conservation plan. Um, so I'm going to vote no on it. Um, but I'm just one vote.
You've got two great newsletters to, to keep you current. And one is Ward Three, I, I, right? That's your ward? No.
Ward Three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have a great newsletter for, uh, Ward Three and all folks in Southern Arizona. And you also have the Democrats of Greater Tucson, which is a weekly newsletter. And, um, we'll have some more updates on, on speakers coming up. Uh, if you're interested in some, uh, other opportunities to go to a reception and support candidates, uh, just, just shoot me a chat or, uh, an email and I'll, I'll keep up with that for you. Okay. And anything else for, oh, we did have a nice discussion at the happy hour uh, about having, uh, a luncheon again. Maybe not every week, but you know, give it a go. Uh, if you've got some thoughts on places to have, uh, DGT luncheon, let me know. I don't think it's going to be as reasonable as the Chinese restaurant. Just so that we, we, we have expectations, it's probably going to cost more money. But it would be worth it. So, um, shoot me a note if you have ideas on places we should visit and see if we can, uh, cut a deal with the restaurant. Brother Johns.
Joe?
Yeah, we do know Brother Johns well, right? That, that's, uh, that's a good idea.
I don't even know if they're open at lunchtime, but they might.
They are, they are.
Oh, well, that's a deal. Uh, I'm just, I want to second what Barrel said about Kevin, well, Ward Three, uh, newsletter, because it is by far the best of any of the council offices, uh, production. I get all five of them and probably I take a look at Paul's. A couple of others I just delete, delete. And then, oh, I, I do get Nikki Lee's from the Southeast side. But, uh, the best part about Kevin's and what his staff does is that it includes all the activities that are within our area. And it's easy to go to anything you want. I mean, the directions are there, the layout is fantastic. It's very readable. And that's, that's the big thing that sells me on it. And so I just, I, I urge all of you to sign up for that because it tells you what's going on. And in our ward, my ward, Ward Three, and it, it, you know, if you live in another ward, you can still come to things that are in Ward Three. So check it out. You really need to.
Thank you, Lee.
Now is the time to, uh, really come together as a community.
Yes.
And, and we gotta be in it for the long haul. Um, things are, are, i- if anything, things are going to get more and more interesting. They're, they're not going to get better. So we have to depend on each other. We have to help each other, support each other. And, um, as, uh, a past president said, keep the faith. So let's, uh, let's remember that. Okay. So any, anyone last call? Questions? Comments?
Well, we have a, we have another 10 minutes, I think. So I'd just like to hear Kevin talk about some of the stuff he wants to talk about or what his staff is doing.
That's right.
You're collecting stuff for, I don't know, I brought a bunch of towels by the other day. I don't know who they were for. Is it the Tucson?
I'll take that as a question.
Good question.
Tucson has a robust housing action strategic plan. I forget what it stands for, but it's hast. And part of it, the big lacking was the very low barrier shelters. Our first low barrier shelter that we put in place, um, was the Wildcat Inn, which is an old motel on Miracle Mile, and it's just north of the Tucson House, which is the biggest public housing project in Tucson. And by the way, which, for which we got $50 million from HUD to, um, do the maintenance, the deferred maintenance and, and bring it up to, to code and, um, and do some other housing. But, uh, we've learned so much from this, uh, low barrier Wildcat Inn. It was, it's being run by people who have recently lived experience on the street. And, um, it's, it's, it's amazing when you can be in a room where you can lock the door and decompress for a couple of days, get clean, have new clothes, have food guaranteed, access to a typewriter and someone can help you because when you're on the street, you've lost all your ID. You've lost a lot of stuff and it takes a while to rebuild. Um, and, and people can finally get, take use of job training programs. They know their kids are going to school and being taken care of. There's been great successes. So my office focuses a lot on providing extra stuff to the, to the people who are graduating from this place. They've, they've got a, a HUD voucher or they found some housing that's affordable enough for them. They have the job so they can pay the bills. But they have nothing. They've lost everything on, on their journey to the streets. And so anything you can imagine that you would need setting up an apartment or a household, sheets, um, all the kitchen stuff, towels, shoes, any clothes of any sort, um, cleaning material. Uh, we accept donations and we get a lot of donations from people who found out about this. And we make sure it gets to the, to the Wildcat Inn and is used by people who most desperately need it. That's one of the things we do. We, we have lots of other things. We collect, um, mason jars for Ishkashida, so the refugees, um, who are learning to sell things. They do a lot of salsas and chutneys and jams and things and they, they can use those jars. Our office is open from nine to one, Monday through Friday. Sometimes we get criticized for that. And, uh, you know, when I got there, we were closed. It was still the end of COVID and so we slowly backed into it. And we discovered most people could make the plans to be there from nine to one. We'll meet af- later than that if it's by appointment. And it gives my staff, some of whom have children, ti- time to go home with their kids and then they can work in the evening, you know? And plus there's the internet. Many of us during COVID were working at home. And the other thing I, I learned is that every so often a crazy person shows up at our office. So we really need to have two people there at once. It took me a year before I realized there's a panic button behind my, my desk in case something happens. It, it's, it's a different world. Uh, Robert has a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
So I went to the open house, uh, for the new public housing over what used to be Notel Motel. I forgot what the new name for it is.
Miracle on, on, uh, Milagro and Oracle.
So brand new apartments, uh, lovely, brand new paved parking lot. Not a single EV charger at the place. Doesn't that violate Tucson's ordinance, uh, for, uh, public charging in new construction?
I do not know. I'll check, I'll check it, check it out, Robert.
It would be nice if, you know, construction done by the city had at least one EV charger there.
Yeah. It, it's an interesting project. It's two motels and there was an empty lot in between. And so the new building is the one in between and it's several stories high. This, this is a, a project that's, that's dedicated for senior housing with 16 of the, I forget how many units dedicated to seniors that have been recently on the street. Who are getting off the street and that now they have a place where they can be. And so it's focused on resources that seniors will be. But, by the way, one of our latest, um, uh, housing projects is the old, uh, bum steer, which has been razed to the ground. You can see the ruins of it. It's across the street from Brother Johns. It's going to be called Sugar Hill something and that, that'll be, uh, housing. We have a lot of housing programs, but you make a good point. There, there should be EV chargers. So someone could argue that people who are at, at this affordable housing level may be inclined not to have EVs, but, um, I think we should have them there for people who are visiting them if nothing else.
And that's entirely true, but certainly city employees, uh, visiting the site could use a charger while they're, they're doing work. So.
You know, as I think about it, the other possibility is we are behind on doing all sorts of EV chargers that will be sitting. You know, as I think about it, the other possibility is we are behind on doing all sorts of EV chargers that will be city-owned. And it may be that this is gonna be one of the many that will be put in that Michael Cattisano is working on. So it might be that we're just waiting for one big contract and someone will come in and put in a lot of EV chargers. But I'll find out and get back to you, Robert.
It would be nice if they had put in the conduit before they paved the parking lot.
Oh geez, yeah.
Okay, I do actually wanna make sure we get to a couple other things. Barrel has a quite, a question. Do city council members work together to accomplish the issues you had said you address?
Sometimes yes and no, it depends. I work hard to have good relationships with my colleagues because, you know, we, we have to work together and, and you need four votes and ideally you need seven votes. Do they agree with all, with me on all the issues? Absolutely not. The wards are different. And, and for instance, Nikki, Nikki Lee and Paul Cunningham, their district's transportation needs are a lot different than Lane Santa Cruz, Karen Ulix and mine, which makes much greater use of public transit and especially the streetcar. So we work together. And I think that's an important attribute of a city council person. I mean, it's, it's, you need to know how, how to have a discussion about things and come to a strong forward compromise. And maybe learn from your colleagues and revise your thinking on some issues. It is so very interesting.
Okay, so she also reinforces that homeless issues should be brought up at the neighborhood leaders gathering on April 26th. I would hope that be a consistent meeting.
Yeah. I'm not, Rebecca Rup, who is, works for the city, who for decades has been our liaison with neighborhood associations, is putting that meeting together. So I, I can't imagine that homeless issues won't be part of it because it's designed for neighborhood leaders to talk to other neighborhood leaders about what they're doing and share insights. But it's not something that I, that I influence.
Yeah, and she, she also reinforces maybe bringing together unhomed and neighborhood leaders and nonprofits to try to help each other could come up with some solutions. Okay. Barrel, were there any other questions you had in the chat? I wanna make sure I covered them. Okay, so let's see. Oh, okay. We, we had a request from a couple folks about how do you sign up for the Democrats' Greater Tucson Newsletter? What you wanna do is go to the website, thebgt.org. And as you work your way through the website, you'll find a place where you can add your email and we'll start getting the, the, the newsletter to you. Okay. And one in the chat was a mention about have we thought about going to like a bag lunch idea? And the idea is that, that, that has come across my mind. And I think we're gonna have to get together some of our board members, some of our members and see what we can come up with. And again, it, it might be, we could look into a hybrid meeting. We could look into maybe once a month, a live meeting. I think it's gonna be a, a robust discussion on how we could serve folks better. Okay, any other? Okay, the Barrel has, the washes are all over the city. Let's see. The washes are all over the city. They are important wildlife habitats. So there are no borders between this. So the city council should be working together to save these areas.
Can't argue with that.
Joe?
Yeah.
Uh, is it possible if we have a, a live or a lunch meeting to put it on the internet where you could ask questions remotely?
Yeah, that would be the hybrid idea where you, you basically could either choose to stay home and watch it online on a Zoom call, or you could go to a location and order lunch or bring lunch so that you would, it, hybrids take a little, well, hybrid takes more technology and more people who understand the technology. What I've seen in my experience with hybrids, sometimes somebody loses out. Either the people who are at home watching or the people that are at the physical location. So anything we do is gonna keep keep the same standard we have right now, which is, which is a good standard. But I always love it because I have not been to a live meeting. So I, I, I do kinda look forward to see if we can pull it off. So thank you. Was that Craig?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, good. You know, there is a place, Barrel. Does anyone know how we can help a fellow Democrat to download the, the chat?
I've always cut and paste it during the meeting.
Okay, well, I can, Barrel, I can leave it on. Would you like to cut and paste it?
To cut, you can take the, up at the top where it says the DGT org presents Kevin Dahl, there are three little dots. Press on them and that'll give you a saved chat.
Okay, is there someplace else also that I can download this Zoom to send it to other people in my neighborhood? So they can listen to this I'm asking. Is there some way that I can pass on this Zoom to other members so that they may not, because they were.
Yeah, I think. Was that Mary? Mary, that you gave us that advice with the three dots?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I found the three dots, Barrel. What you wanna do is go where it says meeting chat up on top. The dgt.org presents Kevin Dahl for Tucson. All you have to do is click on those three dots and, and they'll be, it'll say save chat. So you should be able to save the chat that way.
I have to go to another meeting.
Okay, Kevin, let's give Kevin a big round of applause there. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you so very much. Thanks for all you do.
My pleasure.
Joe, I think Mary is asking about how she, that they, all of these are recorded and her friends can watch the recording from the website.
Oh, well, that, that's even easier, right? We're gonna put this on YouTube, the, the whole meeting. So Barrel, that could probably work for you even better.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your concerns and really appreciated your questions. Okay, so we've covered a lot of ground. And for those of us who started early with me today, the month of May is the month that is the whole month in spring. So the merry month of May. So who know, who remembers that song? Wait, was Susie? You do Camelot? Yeah. Okay, keep up the great work. We got our work ahead of us. But the going gets going when it gets rough. So let's keep it in mind. Yep.
Bye-bye.